We're going to take tests.
Oh, so you got to teach them how to take them?
Yeah, and it's a test then. Colleges don't look at, military doesn't look at, they don't pass a graduate.
They don't have to pass it to graduate?
No. I'm the only one held count before.
Which makes perfect sense.
It's like grade you, is that what it's like the teachers?
Yep.
But we spend millions of dollars.
We're getting raised.
Administering it.
I have, right, I doesn't have any benefit to my students. Because they still take the ASVAT, those areas.
And ACTs, what college? I thought they had to have like thirteen things to graduate. Well, you have to have a school of seven. I teach algebra two, which is a junior year, by the time it gets to me, I have to get my team to teach me. I have kind of students that had not passed a graduate. And honestly, if you're going to go, when you're going to go.
Either way, I mean, it's Elizabeth's department, you can contact her. It's just for numbers. You're welcome to visit me at the stand if you want more detail about, I can't give you detail in terms of science and all that, Sam, kids, people that I could talk to you about from a whole perspective.
And we've been literally, it starts with, every day, we're testing, history, chemistry, geometry, US history, our students have kind of danced all.
We can say for the math and math test for three straight months. So you stop your lesson plan.
Yes, sir.
So for basically two months out of the year, you're studying, you're preparing for this test.
Very good.
Okay. That's perfect sense.
Which again, has actually no impact on the life, what's what?
No.
We're going to spend millions of dollars doing it. I teach my kids every way, they can take a user graphing calculator.
I was thinking they could, too, it's like, what's the?
And so I'm talking, everybody plug an answer in to give the right answer, and I show them, you can draw up an answer in a calculator and find the answer. And yet they still want to do these whole process, I'm like, kids, I'm going to show you how to ACIS without knowing anything about. Because they give it to you, and honestly, that's hard.
Would you call the vote, please?
President?
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Terry Kavner? David Roberts? Mark Ham?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Would you please join me in the flag slip, please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry about that, Dave, I didn't know you'd step down.
Didn't realize you were that ready.
I didn't know, you were out there, sorry. Item two is a consent docket, oh wait, I have a proclamation to read, item C, a very important item. This is a proclamation of National Police Week by the City of Moore. To recognize National Police Week 2015 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in the communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Moore Police Department. Whereas some 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, over 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, including one member of the Moore Police Department. Whereas the 20,267 names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. Whereas 273 new names of fallen heroes have been added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this year, including 126 officers killed in 2014. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial Fund's 28th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2015. Whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all of the following officers and their families, and that, to further remember their contributions, I direct all city flags to be flown at half staff. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Glenn Lewis, Mayor, formally designate May 10 through the 16th, 2015, this Police Week in Moore, Oklahoma, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in the communities across the nation. And I would like to present this to you, sir. Thank you very much. Thanks.
And if I could, just, I'll just carry on some blue folders in your bag.
Okay. Thanks.
The blue folder just kind of gives some highlights of what we're going to be doing during Police Week, and I'll just point out a few of them to you, and of course, you can look at this at your leisure. But the big event is going to be our kickoff, an open house for the Police Department on Mother's Day. We're going to do a bike ride up to the memorial to raise some money for the Law Enforcement Officer Memorial, and of course, we're going to do our memorial service on the 14th, which is actually a day earlier this year for some other events. But we're also, I include some literature in there about two programs we're kicking off, the one next door you'll see in there. It's kind of a social media neighborhood watch program. And what's different about this one is that neighbors connect with neighbors, and folks that don't live in these neighborhoods or these areas can't get into those systems, so they can communicate with each other, they can communicate with us. And the other one was our, a little bit about our Police Unity Tour, the fundraiser, that's our GoFundMe account that we started, so if there's any assistance or any support, it'd be much appreciated, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item two is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held April 6, 2015. Item B, receive the minutes of the regular park board meeting held January 6, 2015. Item C, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2014-2015 in the amount of $7,657,431.45.
Any questions to approve?
All right.
Second.
Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider adoption of resolution number 82115 pertaining to the general obligation bonds of 2015B approved by a majority of the qualified voters at an election held on November 4, 2014, fixing the amount of bonds to mature each year, fixing the time and place the bonds are to be sold, and authorizing the clerk to give notice of said sale as required by law.
Mayor Chris Cochrane, our financial advisor, is here to speak to you about this, just as a reminder, this is the first issuance of the general obligation bonds that were approved back in 2014 for the 34th Street Bridge projects across I-35. $5,875,000 will be in this issuance out of the total of $15 million that was authorized back at the election, so Chris will just kind of walk you through the process.
Thanks, Mr. Eady. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's good to be here with you all again. The resolution, I'm going to start there, the resolution's very simple. It sets the date, time, and place for when you're going to sell these bonds. So as Mr. Eady says, we had $15 million in total approved, we're starting the process of selling $5,875,000 right now. So the resolution on the second page, section one, states that the award date will be, the bids will be due on May 18 until 2:00 PM, and then we will present them to you like we normally do at your meeting that night at 6:30. That's really all this resolution does. I thought it would be helpful to just kind of walk through real quick, just to kind of remind you of what to expect. So after this meeting, we have to do some legal publications in the newspaper advertising our bond sale. Mr. Eady and Mr. Corbett and our group will be involved in presenting all of the bond material to the rating agencies. So we will present this credit to the rating agency and obtain a credit rating. Once we have the credit rating, we'll be in a position to offer the bonds for sale, and then, of course, we just, if we just offer them out to anybody who wants to buy the bonds on a sealed bid basis. And so we ask you to award the bonds to the bidder that provided the city with the lowest total cost of funds, and that's really where we are. So our timing is, of course, we would be back here on May 18 for the bond sale, then we would file our bond materials with the Attorney General shortly thereafter, and we would be in a position to get you bond money very early, I think right now we're projecting July 2 is when the city would have this first round of bond money. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you have, but pretty basic agenda at the time.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion on this item?
Motion to re-adopt this resolution.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number four is consider approval of an employment agreement with Chris Cochrane of BOSE Incorporated as a financial advisor and Terry L. Hawkins of Phillips Memorial PC as bond counsel concerning the general obligation bonds authorized at the November 4, 2014 election.
Mayor, this is the, as it says, is the employment agreements for Terry, the bond counsel, and for Chris, and Chris and Chris, I guess, but with BOSE, as far as a financial advisor for these bonds. The agreement will cover the entire $15 million of the issuance when those bonds are issued in the future. It'll apply only now, of course, to the first phase of the month. The rates for these have not changed in quite a number of years, 0.75% for each term of the amount of the bonds for their work, which will be paid at closing on the bonds.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider approval of a permit for Dawson Geophysical authorizing the performance of geophysical seismic testing on city right-of-way property.
Mayor, this is the item that was on the agenda previously that you tabled, looking for or seeking to get additional information and assurances with regard to this.
I think we got that at the work study.
We got that at the work study session, hopefully you did, so we're recommending that we go ahead with this.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Give approval.
Yeah, my second is a motion.
Thank you both. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. I've been asked, the owner of the Silverleaf Shopping Center couldn't be here tonight, so I've been asked to table item number six.
So moved.
All right, thank you. Do a second.
Second.
I have a comment, but we're going to table it, and I can bring it up at the very end over this appropriate time.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's just in reference to that shopping center, you know, we're wanting them to make some improvements on their property, and I've had property in business with Mr. Eady, just a little bit about this, and want to throw it out to the rest of the council and just get your two cents, and not that we'll make any decisions tonight, but it's just my concern is that some of the business owners or property owners in different parts of the area, and as cities grow and develop, and things change, and I remember back in the day, 12th Street was the street, and that's where a lot of things happened, and a lot of the new growth and things that happened along 19th and farther to our south, a lot of this stuff is new. And I just don't want Moore II to become a ward where things are run down and just not taken care of.
Neglected.
And I just, yeah, I just wanted to, to, some of the ordinance, or the ordinances that we have in place, maybe we need to put a little more teeth on, a little more enforcement power that the city can have to encourage people, property owners, to take care of their properties. And you could go anywhere probably in Moore II and just look at some of the shopping centers that we have, and they're just parking lots, lighting, and other things that have just been neglected over the years. And I understand it's old, it's not brand-new, the house I live in is old, but if I quit mowing my lawn, and the city can come out and eventually mow it for me and then put lean on my property. So I would like for us to maybe look at the ordinances that we have pertaining to upkeep of the properties, and then just giving the city a little bit more enforcement powers in their ability to look at that. Now, I'm, look at this as just a citizen that lives here, I'm not a property owner other than a house, commercial property, and I don't want more to ever become a place where it's hard to start a business. I have friends that have small businesses, you know, they're not all the national retailers that can come in with millions of dollars and do some great things. Some people have an idea, they want to start a small business, I don't want to prohibit them from doing that, but if you own property, you need to maintain that property so that it's nice as far as its appearance. So if we can maybe look at that, council, I don't know, if you have any ideas or what, we can talk about it or direct it to Mr. Eady later and just have him be able to talk some of that.
Okay. I think maybe one of the things we need to do is maybe look for some other businesses to go over there, like, there's not really, you know, like a bronze or something, there's not any places really to eat except on the, you got the Burger King on that side, and there's the Korean restaurant, and that's about it. Maybe we need to look to help push a little development over that way, to kind of do an upkeep on it. Maybe work with the shopping center owner and say, hey, what can we do to help you get people over here?
Yeah.
An upkeep would be a great start. I agree with you.
Before that, the little bit of knowledge that I have about development and retail, you know, they look at where the people are and the numbers if they can support that Some of the seminars that I've been to, the things that the city offer as far as an incentive to come to that area, it's a good thing, but it's really not the bottom line. Bottom line for them are the people there that should support that. So whatever we could do, but if there are those that are just wanting to invest the very minimal amount of money so they can make the biggest profit, I think we need to look at them and maybe encourage them along to take care of their properties from the bottom.
Okay.
I did visit with Mark about this and suggested he bring it up to you all, just to bring it into a kind of a public forefront. I think that there probably are some things we can do or we can look at with regard to these centers, and there's three or four of them around that we could probably all think of that might have some concern. So we will definitely look at that internally, see what we can do, and be prepared to make some recommendations in the near future to you all.
Okay. Okay. We call for the vote on the table?
No.
Okay, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item is tabled. Item number seven is discuss, consider approval of an agreement for the library services with Pioneer Library System.
Mayor, as you all know, we have a great library and a great working relationship with our library, but the system approached us and asked us, or indicated they'd like to formalize that a little bit in terms of the relationship that we have with them and have had for many years. So the agreement that you see tonight, both entities have looked at and have agreed to, and it sets forth pretty much what we do, what the city's responsibilities are, and what we are to provide in order to have a library, and what Pioneer Library System is to provide. Ann Masters is here, the director of the library system, she'd like to speak to you all for a moment as well.
Mayor Lewis, members of the council, city manager of Eady and city staff, thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight. What I really said to Steve was, would you be the first community that I work with so that we can use the agreement that we put in place here as a model that I can take to the other communities that we serve to put these agreements in place? So I thank Steve for his time, and also your attorney, Mr. Brink, for your time in developing this agreement that does everything that we feel we needed to do, it's in alignment with the policy that we have, as Steve said. I just want to make a few other comments, and number one, just to tell you how much we appreciate the relationship that we have with the City of Moore. We're proud of the library facility and all of the things that you do to maintain that facility and really make it a showplace for library services. I want to mention and introduce, I'm sure you know her, but Ashley Welkey is your branch manager, and she and the Moore Public Library staff do a great job, I think, of serving the community through creative programs and excellent customer service. We just have installed five new self-check machines in the Moore Library, and we, in a few weeks, will be installing an iPad checkout machine for in-library use, which will be an exciting addition, I think, to the library. Wanted to mention that we've expanded our outreach services to several locations in the Moore community. Five daycare centers, a brand senior center, and the Moore Youth and Family Center all have collections, small library collections, that we rotate and keep fresh in those locations. The Moore Library has great relationships with the Moore Public Schools, with the Chamber of Commerce, and other groups in the city of Moore. So thank you for all that you do to make our partnership a successful one and to serve your community with good library services. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve an agreement with the library services.
All right, thank you.
For library services, for the Pioneer Library System.
Okay. Second. All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this room? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Okay. Item number eight is consider awarding bid number 1415-007 Audio Visual Services for Central Park Recreation Center to audio/video designs in the amount of $119,844.
Mayor, council, this is for the Central Park Building. This includes the sound and video for several meeting rooms, the gym, paging system throughout the, throughout the recreation center. It does not include anything for the park itself, but it is just the buildings.
Did we take competitive bids on this?
We did take competitive bids, we did receive them, this was the lowest bid. The next lowest was $65,000 more, so it was in the 185 range.
All right, thank you very much.
Next question, I think, award bid, lowest bid.
All right, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other further discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item nine is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held April 6, 2015. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2014-2015 in the amount of $129,287.45.
Moved to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, any other, well, this is a consent docket, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number 10 is also a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held April 6, 2015. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2014-2015 in the amount of $97,392.64.
Moved to approve?
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote for any other discussion?
David Roberts?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting. Terry's not here, so David, I believe, is yours.
Okay, would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus?
Present.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, here.
David Roberts?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Terry Kavner?
Item 12 is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held March 16, 2015.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
David Roberts?
Yes. This time, we will recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
All right, thank you. Item 13 is new business, let the record reflect that all the members present before are present. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. We have no one signed up to speak that I know.
We have no one signed up to speak that I know. Wait, here, sorry. Wes Williams?
My name is Wes Williams. I represent the softball community in Moore. I'm the president of the Moore Girls Softball Association. I've been doing this for a while, and I'm here to thank each and every one of y'all on behalf of the softball community for the approval of November 2012, I believe, quarter cent tax increase to help and just thank y'all for what y'all have done to the park. Not only did y'all have an impact on just the community of Moore, but literally the state as well, as we bring teams in from all over the state. We got surrounding teams coming from Kansas, Arkansas, Colorado, and everywhere to play at your facilities. And also, I hear people talking about all the time, once we start getting the tournaments coming, this is the first time, literally, I have ever heard anything in my life as such, but I've literally had parents tell me that for one time, they're actually glad that they pay taxes, just to see something like that. I mean...
Can we get those people's names?
Yes, we'd like to. But they are very ecstatic on what y'all have done, and they're proud to be a part of it. So I just want to come and thank each and every one of y'all on behalf of what y'all did for the community, especially for the softball community. So on that, thank y'all very much. We appreciate it.
We appreciate you guys. Thank you very much. Every once in a while, you need to hear something like that.
Yes.
If you haven't had an opportunity to go out there and look at it, it is really remarkable the change that was made for the softball out there, and baseball guys in the world out there that may be watching, we're going to be doing some improvements for baseball in the near future, so don't worry about that. But it is great, and Todd and what the Parks Department has done with the approval of our, and support of our citizens to raise that money to do it is great.
Okay. Anybody else? No one else signed up? Okay. Item B is items from the city council trustees.
I noticed the lights over, and then you sent an email that may help you want, the streetlights on Main Street between Broadway and Service Road, the streetlights, the street lighting, not the traffic signals are out, and out for most of the week. I'm going to look into those.
On Main Street?
Yes, on Main Street, between Broadway and the interstate.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Okay. Any items from the city manager?
Mayor, just want to mention a couple of things. One is just to tell you all that the project at 19th and Broadway will be substantially complete this week, I'm told. They should be starting the striping tonight, get the traffic signals all up and running by the end of the week. Down there at that intersection, it's going to make a remarkable difference down there. I had the opportunity to tour the Sam's today and talk to the general manager down there. They are actually opening the gas tomorrow, I believe, station. As you all know, the grand opening is May 7, and I think that's going to be about 8:00, so all of you all need to have that on your calendar, please. But more than that, the general manager of the store down there is very excited to be here. It's a beautiful store. Outside, you can see that, but whenever you get the opportunity to see it on the inside, it's remarkable. And talking to him about some of what they expect in terms of sales down there is going to, it's going to be nice. So we're excited about that, but really excited about having them in town as a corporate partner for us as well, because they've already actually provided some water from Sam's, I think, to the school after the storm two or three weeks ago, and already being involved in the community. So that's amazing. We definitely appreciate that. I emailed you earlier, but you may not have seen it, but the court, we found out today, the Court of Civil Appeals upheld the district court's decision in the Shaw's Investments lawsuit. That's the upholding our side of the case, so unless they appeal it to the Supreme Court of Oklahoma, then that hopefully will be the end of it. So there's a little bit of good news there occasionally. Just also wanted to comment and thank Elizabeth Jones and her staff. We had a successful event at the recycle center yesterday for the Earth Day event. Do we know yet how many folks came through in all of Elizabeth?
It was over 300. They lost a lot.
Lost a lot. A lot of folks came and took advantage of the electronics recycling, the tires, glass, other things that we don't normally provide over there, so great opportunity there. I think that's it. I sent out an email earlier that has several other things on it that you need to just take a look at when you have an opportunity, but other than that, that's it.
Okay. Next item is adjourned.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Thank you, both. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you for coming.
Terry didn't give you a stack of, did he? This is what he left? This is it.